Good evening, welcome to the Red Hook Town Board meeting of July 26, 2017. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Danielle, for the folks at home, I have the agenda on the big screen for them to take a look at so they can see the items that we will be discussing this evening. This is our second meeting of the month. Typically, we conduct business and we also hear reports from the various committees and boards or volunteers that really help make this town run as well as it does.
Are you gonna scroll it? Because you scrolled the last time.
Oh, that would be helpful, wouldn't it? Thank you, Danielle.
I think there's a second page too.
There is, the second page has our committee reports. We have 12 different committees. More than that, that'll be reporting. Okay, very good. So announcements. The first announcement I'd like to make is once again to thank the public for their patience with the sidewalk project. As you can see, it is progressing northward. In fact, it's right here in front of Town Hall today and for the next couple of days. If you are coming into Town Hall on Friday, we would let you know that you'll actually need to use the entrance by the recycling center in order to get here. You'll be going through the back door, if you will, because they will be pouring on our entrance here. So that's Friday.
Do we get it at eight o'clock or what?
Yep, so we'll be notifying the folks at the Friday morning meeting and anyone coming into Town Hall, there'll be a sign that will notify them.
Through the back.
To go through the back. And just as a reminder, in the summertime, Town Hall is only open until 12 noon. Okay, and...
On Fridays.
On Friday. Thank you very much, on Fridays. Oh yeah, of course. So the first item on the agenda, let's see if we have any public comments. Do we have any public comments tonight? No? Okay, very good. We'll have another opportunity later tonight. So the first item on the agenda, we're very excited to announce that we have a new assessor that will be joining us. In fact, we have a resolution to formalize, just for the record, but we would like to let you know that the Town Board has interviewed candidates and we have come to an agreement with Cheryl Kazluga, and she's an experienced assessor. And we're very excited about the fact that she'll be joining us. Her start date is July 31st, so that's next week. In fact, by the time you watch this, she will be starting here at Town Hall. She'll be part-time, but she'll be here almost full-time. She'll be here five days a week, full days Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 8:30 to 4:00. And then afternoons on Tuesday and Friday morning, Cheryl will continue to work for another municipality. And this is, once again, our way of trying to be efficient with your tax dollars to cover the necessary positions here in local government, but to do it in such a way that is efficient and affordable. So we're very excited about her. Many of us had a chance to interview with her and we have good thoughts about her going forward. So we have a resolution just to formalize the appointment. She'll be acting assessor and subject to all of the conditions that are normally put forth when we make a new hire. We have a very brief resolution, I won't read it, but essentially it articulates what I've just told you about her hours and her role. This would be Town of Red Hook Resolution Number...
Forty-one.
Forty-one, July 26th, and it's a resolution confirming appointment of acting assessor.
And so moved.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil.
Second.
Thank you, Sarah Imbona. Whereas the Town Board has determined it's necessary to appoint an acting assessor as permitted by real property tax law, and whereas the Town Board has authorized the supervisor to extend an offer to Cheryl Kazluga for the position of acting assessor, now therefore be it resolved. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. The second item on the agenda is a resolution to accept street names for the Hoffman Property TND subdivision. As a reminder for the folks at home, a couple years back, I believe, the planning board approved a development project called the Hoffman Estates, and that is 102 units, and it is adjacent to the movie theater property, the Lyceum. And there are some formalities that the Town Board is involved with, one of which is to clear the proposed use of street names when that development gets built out. And so we have, and I'll put for the folks at home, Danielle, if you wanna go to the screen, because some of them may be interested in seeing what the development might actually look like. That's Old Farm Road there. Let's see if I can blow it up just a little bit more. And one more time. And so there's a few roads, there are a couple of loopy roads, if you will. No dead ends are called the Sacks. And they've got some proposed names, and that's the purpose of tonight's agenda item, is to clear those names by accepting their suggestions. So they are suggesting that the Town Board hereby accepts the private street names of Skylar Drive, Benson Loop, Beekman Road, and Livingston Street. This is Town of Red Hook Resolution Number 42.
And should we maybe just clarify that right now they'll be private until the town, the town will adopt them or whatever the phrase is, once they're accept them, once they're, as public roads, once they're completed, once the development is in stages, right?
Well, that is in the town's discretion.
Okay.
Yeah. That is still the subject of association with the developer.
These are, at this point, characterized as private roads.
At this point, they're private, yeah.
Yep. Okay, and Resolution Number 42, accepting street names for the Hoffman Property TND subdivision. Would somebody like to move this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Sarah, a second.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, thank you very much, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the next item, the third item on the agenda, we don't have anything for the big screen, is reviewing the grant opportunities at CFA season. In fact, the deadline comes up on Friday. I thought perhaps we should consider resubmitting our local government efficiency grant. We were asking for some money to match potentially some other grant funds, which we now know we foresee from the CDPG program, to help us fund the build-out of the new, what we call the new recreational annex property, that's Linden West. And so I put forth for your consideration whether or not you would be interested in having me resubmit this application. We got a rejection letter from the state last year, but it did make avail the possibility of a resubmission, and I figure it doesn't hurt. We've been very lucky with our grants, and so...
So do we just submit exactly the same thing, or do, are we supposed to tweak it?
You know, it will be slightly different because we'll acknowledge the receipt of the matching $200,000 grant, and I can tweak that. What I've given you is the grant that I submitted last year, all 30 pages or so.
Did we get any other feedback on it, like what other things we should think about changing?
No.
Okay.
So obviously, we would tweak it just a little bit. The schedule is obviously gonna change. I'll update that because we didn't get last year's grant request.
When is this due, Robert?
Friday.
Friday? Then it makes sense to do as quickly as possible.
Yeah. It's just, it doesn't cost anything but time. And we asked for $129,000. At the time, we were applying for the project, the project being just the beginning portion of the infrastructure, the Challenger Field, ADA compliant bathrooms, and we requested I'd like to think maybe we'd get lucky the second or third time submitting it.
Does that, and we already have a $200,000 grant for the field, right?
We do, yeah.
Is that, is that toward, is that the total projected cost of 429, including the field and the ancillary?
Well, it should, it should be...
Just here, 529.
Yeah, it's 529. Yeah, and that was just for the infrastructure, the field and the ADA bathroom, so the water, electric, the parking area. Didn't include the rest of the field, it didn't include the pavilion.
Right.
Yeah, the 129 was really just...
But it makes the field operational, and it'll be toward, toward the closer side of the park, toward Linden Avenue, so far as the design goes.
Yes, well, that's what we'll be talking about at our next meeting, is going out to Weston and Sampson.
Yeah.
I'll be asking for your authorization so that we can employ them to revise the master plan that they did for you all several years ago, now that we've acquired that adjacent lot, and we are changing one of the proposed fields to be a challenger combination, that'll leave field.
It would be good when we do that to maybe, rather than just ask them to revise it based on the new field, to maybe have at least one meeting with the REC Commission or some people, and just talk about any other new ideas and developments since, because it's already been, I mean, almost 10 years since we first kind of conceived of that project, and it might be good to just...
Absolutely.
You know, if we're gonna revive it, then any other thoughts that we have, we should really get out now, so...
Yep. Definitely. And maybe we'll make that part of the request.
We might add clear then.
Yeah.
The 529 is adequate for, for the field and the ancillary development allied with the field, right?
We hope.
Yeah.
As you know, Harry, until you go out to bid, you never know exactly what...
I'm aware.
Yeah.
I'm well aware. And we, so we, so far, if we get this grant, we will have 329, and there'll be 200 more that we need to find somewhere.
Well, we're definitely gonna go, have to go out and borrow some funds, that's already in the first run of the budget, some funds to finish building out this project, because obviously, we've got a lot more to go after we even do that initial 529.
Yeah, I realize that there's, we have a great deal more, and many more acres out there need to be developed.
Right, and just so you know, Harry, we'll, we'll be going back, I'll, I'll be here in a few months, talking to you about applying for another CDPG grant for this very same property. I've been encouraged to continue to do that at maybe descending amounts, so that we can continue to build this out, that property out, over the next couple of years with more grant dollars. Was that at all helpful or not, Harry?
Yeah, I am largely aware of it.
Okay. All right. So are we okay to proceed? I'll submit this grant before the end of the week, application, $129,000. It's a Resolution Number 43.
Three.
Dated July 26th, a resolution authorizing submission of an application for a local government efficiency grant regarding Challenger Field. And I assume...
A second.
Is there any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And I should let you know the draft report of all those New York State shared service applications that we discussed briefly, that will be available for the public to take a look at in the next couple of weeks. And we will also hear next month on our applications for shared services, the court facilities, you know, the Red Hook Village and the Town of Red Hook. I'm hearing very good news with that regard, so hopefully, we'll be able to report something to you next month on that. Okay, the next item is a resolution authorizing the letting of bids, tennis court rehabilitation project. As we know, we had our, one of our engineering firms is working on the specs. We have a pre- preliminary design, it's gonna be tweaked a little bit more, I think, in the next couple of days, very minor stuff related to, perhaps, a little drainage. And so we're trying to get this project constructed realistically early September so that we have favorable weather conditions. And we need to put on the scheduled letting of the bids, putting it out there.
The project is basically to tear down the four existing tennis courts and replace them, four new ones in the same location.
It is, and the reconstruction is going to be done in such a way that we hope the drainage will be improved, and so we don't experience the failures that we continue to, we have these cracks that keep coming up, we keep patching, and it's gotten to the point where it's considered unplayable by our...
But is there a price tag that the REC...
We were, yeah, so we were operating under the assumption that it was gonna be about $210,000 for the complete redo of the project. We'll see the specs upcoming shortly. It's going to include making it ADA compliant, so it's gonna be a little bit more than that, because there's gonna be pathways, if you notice on the diagrams there, there're gonna be a couple...
But there's no stairs or steps, so what's the ADA compliant, just the paths have to be widened up?
Yeah, if you're familiar with the tennis court, you have to go up steps in order to get into it, and there has to be a path to go there.
I'm familiar with it, because I just spent two weeks getting my kid there for the free lessons that the town provides, but I have a baby, so I'm going over the grass with a stroller the whole time. You can't get from the pool to the tennis court on a path, and you can't get from the parking lot to the tennis court on a path.
Yeah.
So it's definitely a problem for anybody who...
Yeah.
Is in any way, you know, mobiley, I don't even wanna say impaired, just like you're, you have some special way that you're trying to get around with a stroller, with crutches, with anything.
And are we paying for this?
Right, so again, this is a combination of grants, so the SAM grant was $50,000 that we've appropriated. We have outstanding, we haven't heard back yet from USTA, but expect to in the next several weeks, to see whether we get another $20,000 towards this. And then we'll be borrowing, as we will, for the rest of the rec annex property in order to fund the rest of this project, all of which is already in the first cut of the 2018 budget.
And does it make sense, I know that there's maybe in the REC, I don't know what to call it, if it's a special fund that...
The Parklands Fund?
It's not the Parklands Fund, it's the, it's how we collect the money, like, for example, from REC fees, like, the school district pays them. So that money has just been accruing. I'm just wondering, like, this is the kind of project that we would only put that...
We don't have much money in that account.
I thought it was, the last time we did the budget, it seemed like there was like $40,000 or something on there.
Well, it's tapped into some of that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we can expect this project to be a quarter of a million dollars easy by the time it's done.
Yeah.
If we have $50,000 or $70,000 to cut off that, the good news is if it's done right, we could get a good 20 years out of this. And obviously, it's an important component of our recreation facility.
And again, it's all submitted and approved by the, our Town REC Commission.
Yeah, yes.
Well, the REC Commission, the last time we had, they had a meeting when I was there, they brought it up, and they were concerned about spending big dollars on the tennis courts that are, that are really used on a casual kind of basis. And one of the concerns I have is if TA money goes into it, we can't, the seniors like the idea of being able to play a pickleball on it, which I actually don't know anything about, but they wouldn't, to play pickleball, you have to paint the lines for it on it, and if it's, to make a TA approve, you can't, you can't paint the lines.
Right.
So that, that limits it from some of our, our most, most needy group.
Harry, you mean, the TA requires us to make it adaptable for pickleball?
No, the opposite, the United States Tennis Association.
But this is a tennis court, it's not a pickleball court.
Yeah, yeah, but a pickleball is, is apparently something that seniors play on tennis courts, and many tennis courts have the striping on them for that purpose. So, so it'll be more, more use, generally usable by our residents.
Well, it will be sometime before we do striping, Harry, and we will know by then whether or not we have the $20,000 from USTA. So I would encourage you to continue that discussion with the folks in the REC Commission, and let's be prepared to make a decision otherwise. I don't think striping is something that is going to affect the project cost.
And it's hard to swallow, for me, a quarter of a million dollars for tennis courts.
But Harry, has the REC Commission, they've recommended that we do this, right?
Yeah, this is...
No, they recommended that, that instead of going, going out for the, the gold, the golden version of it, that we go, that we go out and find, find a contractor who is a design-build, where they have the feeling that it would be substantially less costly.
But originally, when we, when we started this project, they did recommend that we do it, that we redo the tennis courts.
Well, there's, there's a problem with that, there's a big crack in them, whatever, as they stand now.
I'm just saying, we did get a formal recommendation from them to redo the tennis courts before we went through the whole thing of deciding to...
That isn't the question.
Yeah.
The question is, do we need, do we need, for a tennis court, do we need, you know, the top of the line?
Well, I don't, is this top of the line, Harry? It looks to me like it's just being rebuilt with proper drainage, as opposed to the drainage that is presumed to be causing all the problems. I don't know that there's anything in here that's all that different.
Did the REC Department recommend the highest cost redone?
No, this is, this is the work that...
They recommended that we do it, and then we sent it to an engineer to have it fully designed out, and this is the final cost. So initially, I think John had gotten just a, sort of a estimate from some company, I don't know which one, and they had recommended a cost that's, it's lower than $250, but I, you know, it's maybe around $100 grand.
It was two, no, 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 it was 210.
210, okay, so wasn't that different?
And, but it didn't include these pathways and maybe some of the drainage features.
But the thing is that we really do, the drainage is really the key, and things like pathways are going to help, as Harry was mentioning, the seniors and other people who are, again, gonna really appreciate having an easy way to get up there. It doesn't make sense to have a tennis court that people have trouble accessing.
I know many people go to other courts because they feel they can't play on our courts, that they're not playable.
I mean, that, so one problem we do have, I think, with the REC in general, is that although it's very ably and well managed by John, there is no real plan in place to do capital replacement of, of all the parts of the facility. There's no place where you can go and really look at the whole facility and say like, okay, here's our plan for when this is gonna need to be replaced in this. Instead, we've just kind of nickel and dimed it for decades, you know, and I, I just wanna make clear that John has done a wonderful job doing that. Like, he just recently tivally got rid of their basketball holes and hoops, and he took them from them, and, you know, they had to like slice off the concrete, and they had, they had like jackhammered them out of the, you know, I mean, he's, he's recycled, he's, he's used every amount of volunteer time and, you know, donations, and as much as they can do to make that thing run, and it's very well-run for very little money. So I'm just saying that it, I think sometimes we get used to that kind of mentality, and I think with something like a REC facility, you do need to also be realistic about putting the necessary money in to make a facility continue for, again, death dates and death dates. So that's just my feeling on it, but...
And I know that we're...
I do believe we need, we need a functional tennis court, and, and the REC Commission agreed, agreed with that, but they did think that we really didn't need necessarily the top of the line, something, something built to luxury standard, and that there are a number of tennis court construction companies, and they seem to know, have a list of them from what they said to me, or said at the meeting, who are design-build organizations who would come in and, and do the whole, the whole works for you. And, and they felt it would be wise to go to those organizations to get a bid as well.
Well, I'm sure we're gonna be notifying them, this is gonna go out for a public bid, Harry, so I would imagine we're gonna get anybody and everybody who wants to build or rebuild our tennis courts.
Yeah, the only thing is, if you go, if you have, go with these engineering standards, there's many ways to, to cook the goose, to cook the goose here, and this is engineering set by one firm. These firms would create their own, their own design.
But Harry, has the REC Commission looked at these design plans by the architectural firm?
This, yes.
And approved them, tie-in bond?
Well, no, it just brought up the question that I, that I am, I'm passing on to you. And, and the concern, the concern that it, you know, it's locking, locking it in, locking us into something rather grand.
But nobody's, I mean, on the plans, it doesn't say that the project has to cost $250,000. I mean, that's the...
No, of course not.
The likely estimate, but I mean, that's the whole point of going out to bid, is that you hope to get the lowest, you know, quality bid, and we'll see what we get, right? I mean...
I'm not sure what the luxury aspect of this is, Harry. I'm, I'm missing something. I know John's been meeting with the engineer regularly to go over this. Is there some aspect of this project that we could do a change order on, or to make it less costly?
Well, there are, there are a number of, there is, in, in, in any engineering question, there are, there are many, many different ways to, to approach it, and it's a function of whether you want, what, you need to do the ultimate, or, or, or is there a more, more economically realistically to do it?
Well, I certainly would welcome any suggestions on how to make it economically less costly. So if you and any others have some, please submit it, because I think we wanna take a look at it and have the contractors take a look at it, certainly have the engineers take a look at it, because we don't wanna have another tennis court... because we don't wanna have, um, another tennis court construction project go bad and be a problem, as opposed to be an asset, so, but do.
They all have a lifetime, no matter, no matter what.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, we have a resolution number of forty-four dated July twenty-sixth, the resolution authorizing the solicitation of public bids for the Recreation Park Tennis Court Rehabilitation. And would somebody like to make that motion?
I will move that.
Thank you, Sarah, second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim, okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. Thank you very much. Um, item number five, a proclamation declaring the first weekend in September, also known as Labor Day Weekend, as Art Studio Views Weekend. Do I have something up here on that? No, I don't. Okay, well, very simply, uh, for the folks at home, I'll show you one of the brochures. This is the tenth anniversary, and the organizers of this event, uh, came into my office, they came, uh, went down to our county exec's office as well, and have asked for a proclamation as a way to help bring more attention to the tenth anniversary of the Art Studio Views. Look around this way, Danielle. And what it is, is a wonderful event where, um, artists, thirty of them, open their studios on the Saturday and Sunday of Labor Day Weekend, so that the public can come in and not only see their artwork, but ask questions about their techniques, what they're using, and it's really a, a wonderful way to get to know some of the folks in our communities. And the artists range anywhere from up north in Germantown, all the way down to almost the Poughkeepsie area. And Red Hook and Tivily, I think we have eight artists represented in the tour, uh, this year. And so it's really a wonderful event, if you haven't done it, I encourage you, it's free. It's a self-guided tour, so you can go to whichever ones you want. There are maps available, uh, here, and brochures here at Town Hall, or you can go online, and I think it's, um, artstudiodviews.com, let's say that's, yes, artstudiodviews.com. And so they asked if we would consider a proclamation. And so we fancied one together. I'm wondering, Bill, can I borrow your vocal cords?
Sure.
Thanks, so I can stop talking.
So the Town of Reddick, a proclamation declaring the first Saturday and Sunday of September as Art Studio Tours Weekend, whereas two thousand seventeen represents the tenth anniversary of one of the Hudson Valley's most unique events, with over thirty artists opening their studios to the public for a free, self-guided tour. And whereas the Red Hook and Tivily artists contribute to the event and the local economy, generating tourism and other revenues, while enriching the culture of our region, and whereas the Hudson Valley has inspired many celebrated artists, including Frederick Church and Thomas Cole. And whereas the Art Studio Tours brings together neighbors in our community to learn about the artists and the techniques they employ. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Reddick hereby proclaim the first weekend in September be additionally recognized as Art Studio Views Weekend. It's dated July twenty-sixth, to be signed by the Town Board members and the supervisor for the Town of Reddick.
Thank you, Bill, and you so move?
I so move.
Okay, I'd be happy to second your resolution. Any further discussion? It's a proclamation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you all very much. Um, we have another set of proclamations tonight. And I'm happy to announce, these are for two Girl Scouts, you know, we have a lot of Boy Scout recognition ceremonies. And I'm happy tonight to let you know about the two Girl Scouts. One is Megan Jankoliak, who I've known, uh, for quite some time, and I think you all do, the daughter of Lisa Lachran, who was the troop leader of the Girl Scouts. And so there's a Gold Scout Award Ceremony coming up. And there's a letter I've written in recognition of that, but a resolution honoring Megan. Whereas Megan Jankoliak has completed the requirement for Gold Award for her years of achievement in Girl Scouts, and has been found worthy of the rank of Gold Award, the highest and most prestigious recognition in scouting. And whereas Megan's project was repainting the girls locker room at Red Hook High, leading sport clinics for younger girls in softball, leading soccer practice for a young travel team, and visiting several physical education classes during their basketball unit to share her passion for the game and what it means to be on a team. Whereas Megan has shown leadership, devotion to duty, and is a true example of the best of our youth, and her achievement as Gold Award Girl Scout will be acknowledged at a ceremony on Thursday, August third. Now therefore be it resolved that the Reddick Town Board honors and commends Megan for her achievement of acquiring the rank of Gold Award, and authorizes that this resolution be passed to commemorate this achievement that's dated, oh, we have it dated August third, that's good enough. And I so move that resolate, resolution.
Second.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
We have a second one. Alexa Franceski. Okay, I've got a letter for her, and here's, um, her resolution. Whereas Alexa has completed the requirement for Gold Award for her years of achievement in Girl Scouts. Her project was helping create, decorate, and supply a teen reading room for, uh, teens of the family in homeless shelter in Kingston, New York, what a great project. Where they could go for homework, quiet time, or a place just to be teenagers that was safe for them. With her father's help, she made a bookshelf for the reading room, she held book drives, purchased new books, and some of those books went to the children's home in Poughkeepsie and the Community Action Program in Catskill. And she held a few story hours with the younger children of the shelter. And we have some wherethas where she's shown leadership, devotion, and so now therefore be it resolved that the Red Hook Town Board honors and commends Alexa for her achievement of requiring the rank of Gold Award, and authorizes this resolution be passed to commemorate this achievement. And I so move.
Sorry.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Really terrific projects, and we have more coming. Lisa sent me a list, I think of six, all tall and tall, so I'm happy to see our Girl Scouts getting the recognition that they deserve. Well, we are at that point in the evening, item number seven is board reports. And so we have as our first report, the Town of Reddick Planning Board Report for July, and I will put that up on the screen for the folks at home. Sarah, if you would like to read the report, that would be terrific.
Sure. All right, so this is the planning board report for July. Uh, the planning board met just once in July and continued or commenced review of the following applications. An application to construct a nine hundred and twenty square foot addition to an existing Victorian era building with a twenty space gravel parking lot in the institutional historic landmark overlay and scenic corridor overlay district, that's the Bard Baronia House. An application to create two parcels, a twelve point six acre and ten point six acre parcels from a twenty three point two acre parcel in the R one zoning district. Um, a point four acre portion of the lot is located in the village of Red Hook. And the Bard Master Plan, which is a special permit. And an application for a lotline alteration or consolidation between a three point six acre and a one point seven acre lot, and a special permit for collecting spring water in the RD three zoning district. That's the Coker Town Spring Special Permit. The board held public hearings for and granted conditional approval for the following projects. The countryside storage amended site plan, which revises an approved site plan for two four thou, four thousand fifty square foot storage buildings, two one three thousand square foot storage building, and a six hundred and eighty-four square foot garage. An application to create two parcels, two point one six acres and five point nine acres from an eight acre parcel in the R one point five zoning district. And they also granted extensions to fulfill the condition, conditions of approval to preserve a lake skill and teviatree remediation. Um, applications consented for the ZBA to serve as lead agency for the Bard College Micro Antenna Project, which is coming up for a public hearing.
Thank you, thank you, Sarah. And I was, uh, a little bit technologically inept there for a moment, but Danielle, if you have a few extra seconds to stay on the screen there, so the folks can see those projects. And I'm wondering, while we're on the topic of the planning board report, whether or not the Town Board would like to consider having, like, other municipalities in our area, whether they'd like to have those meetings also taped on Panda for the public to view. I know nearby townships do in fact do that, is that something that we would consider, I throw it out there for you to at least think about between now and, um, our next meeting? I know that folks in our community really care a lot about the projects that are being done, um, all around, obviously, but, um, also in particular in their neighborhoods and, you know, on properties that, you know, are very, uh, important to, to them, so.
I think if we were gonna do that, I would just say that, um, I know, like, a topic that's come up in the past is the lack of miking for planning board meetings, and the fact that they're all around a square table, which means that members of the public feel uncomfortable, even though it is all public information. It's sort of awkward, you can't really, you know, it feels weird to just approach the table and peer over people's shoulders, and I'm just wondering about the efficacy of filming something like that, so if we have to consider, yeah.
Well, wait, let me just interject, don't forget, they're, all the projects are up here now, at the planning board.
Yeah, okay, that's true, so as long as that is a possibility, I'm figuring that, and then, I think the last couple meetings I went to, they weren't using that, are you sure they're using it?
Yeah. They, they should be, they have been.
Okay.
I know there was one meeting where there was some, they had some technical difficulty, but, no, I think so, yeah.
Yeah. I just think we might wanna consider miking or something, because I think it is gonna be difficult for it to be really useful if people can't hear what's going on, you know, even if they can see that.
Sure. Sure.
I mean, I don't know, I haven't heard any feedback on whether people can actually see that from the camera super well. I mean, some of those things, and I'm thinking planning board documents, fairly small print, you know, it's not like people are always standing up there and sort of gesturing and making a full presentation unless it's a public hearing, so. We might just wanna, I think it would be great to have it on camera, but it might require a couple changes, and I don't know if the planning board, you know, it might be something we wanna talk to the planning board.
See, you know, one of the things, we, the, the planning board minutes are available very quickly, and
Yeah.
and, and the minutes are, are quite informative in their own right.
Yeah, they're pretty helpful.
And they're available now, um, and how about what, your redesign of the, uh, of our technology, will that make them more apparent and easier for people to get to?
Yeah, I guess it'll hopefully make everything a little easier to get to, but, you mean the website, yeah.
The problem, the problem, Harry, with reading minutes is, it's already occurred by the time you're reading the minutes, and so you're really not participating, you know, necessarily at, at the point in time that you wanna be. You're going back, does that make any sense to you?
Yeah, but people aren't seeing, won't see the film for a few days after the.
Well, true, that's a couple of days, but you, you have to know to go on and get those minutes onto our website, and they're not always posted within a few days. I mean, the minutes don't generally come out for the planning board for a couple of weeks, I believe.
Well, I think they're more, I, I look at them rather, rather, sure, I don't.
But that would be the same with Panda, I mean, you'd have to go and find the meeting you wanna go to on their YouTube channel, or on their,
True. True.
on the cable or whatever, so, I mean, I, as far as the timeliness of it, I don't know if it's that different from the minutes issue, but it's more, I mean, some people are gonna appreciate a visual recording of a meeting compared to minutes, you know, and sometimes you get a real feel for things from the one shit, and listen to the discussion as opposed to the minutes, but.
The discussion, yeah. Yeah.
I think it's great, but I would just, if, especially if it's gonna cost us some extra money in our contract, which I don't have a problem with, but I would want to talk to the planning board about how to make that effective use of the time and the money.
Yeah. Yeah.
Danielle, did you have something to, to add to that?
Can I, can I add something to this?
No.
Um, so the way the Town of Ryanbeck does it is.
You can go to the mic so people can see that you're not a discipled voice, can you do that?
I hate you on camera, that's why I work behind the camera. Okay, so, um, so the way the Town of Ryanbeck does it, um, first of all, they use the same dais that the, the board would use, so that would solve your hunched around the table, because we have done other things that were hunched around the table, and it's very awkward, not for the people watching, but also for the camera people, they hate doing it. So if they could sit out like this and use the mics, then that would solve that. Um, and as far, I just wanted to address the YouTube thing. I usually get the meeting up within forty-eight hours, unless I have some weird technical difficulties or power outage or something like that, usually the meetings are on and available within forty-eight hours, so. I just wanted to say those two things.
Yeah, great.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I would say the way Ryanbeck does it, it makes it a very open feeling for, both for people watching, from the audience, and I'm imagining viewers from home, well, I have watched them on, online. The way we do it, I just, I can't quite picture it, but we could give it a shot.
Yeah, okay. Uh, next up is the ZBA report.
Uh, the board met on July twelfth, they had, uh, they discussed three applications, they had reviews of three appeals. One was for a carport for, um, an area variance for the setback. The second one was for, actually for the Baronia House on Bard, to, because they are slightly over the maximum, in the institutional zone, only five percent is allowed per lot. And they're institutional zone now, you know, they used to be, uh, three. And in the institutional zone, you're only allowed five percent rather than, rather than the tens, and they're gonna end up six point four, so they're asking for a variance from that. It's, it's basically, you know, putting addition, it actually covers a lot smaller than it used to when there were some farms there. And the third one was for the microcellular, uh, antenna at Bard. And what that'll do, it's, it's not like a big cell tower, but they're asking for a variance, and it's questionable whether it's a use of, or actual area variance, um, because the way our code is written, because at the time our code was written, there were no such, there was no such thing as microcellular towers. And what this, the idea of it is it'll alleviate traffic, because obviously, being in college, there's an awful lot of traffic, which actually affects all the residents, because we all feed off the tower, you know, our tower down by our water tower.
Right.
So this could alleviate traffic on that, and that's, that's the reason for it. And their public hearing, all their public hearings is set up for the next meeting, which is August ninth.
Very good. We also have, Jim, while you're on a roll, we have the Building and Zoning Department Report.
Okay, the building is only, I'll give you a synopsis, this is a month report submitted to us by them for July of two thousand seventeen. There were twenty-two permits issued, eighteen inspections, nineteen COs slash CC, and zero complaints that they had to file off on, and a total revenue for the month was two thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Right. And it's, it, we're seeing a, a bit of a slowdown as compared to last year, when we had our solar rise campaign.
Yes.
Um, we had a lot of permits related to solar installations. Bill, we have a police department report, if you would like to give us some highlights.
Well, the Reddick Police Department Report for, um, July, June, July, two thousand seventeen, shows. shows that during the period, there were seventy incidents reported to the police department. There were a total of six arrests made and fifty tickets issued by the police during that time.
Yes, we'd like to, you know, let you know there's more speed enforcement going on on our local roads. We also have a speed trailer that, as we speak, I think is on Walesback Road, which will be making its way around town as well. So we want to give you a heads up for all of that.
What's a speed trailer? Is that what it says? Does that tell me what speed you're doing?
What speed you're doing exactly, yeah.
That's the friendlier way to caution you about speeding.
Right, part of that education.
Yes.
Training that we all need sometimes. Okay, we have a water department report, Jim.
This is, was generated at the July thirteenth work session and it's the June two thousand seventeen monthly report. Normal amount pumped is seventy-seven thousand gallons per day. In June of two thousand seventeen, we pumped a hundred and four thousand gallons per day. And I think the reason for the increase on the report here is that Bard used two hundred and five thousand gallons. Maybe they were, you know, had to use it because they're, who knows, on their system. Which would make sense because otherwise that would explain why we pump so many water.
Right.
Both wells are stable with their resting and running levels. They're both, pump volumes, well one is pumping two hundred and thirty gallons per minute, well two, two hundred and forty gallons per minute. Turbidity, there's nothing, the chlorine digital's within normal parameters. The water tests do in two thousand seventeen, you know, they've been completing them. And by the filters of both the one and the five micron operating property, we have spare micron filters on hand and plenty of sodium hypochlorite on hand. They have a problem with the remote meter readers. The badge are updated, the meter heads, it appears to need to update to replace the remote reader. They've had some ongoing circuit breaker problems. And they want to, you know, review the pumping system as Hank has, you know, told us a couple times. Updating that, the control of the pumps and so on and so forth. That water storage standpipe inspection proposal was mailed May twenty-second. Bids were due June twelfth. Two bids received. Pittsburgh Tank and Tower is the lowest bid. Two thousand five hundred for the inspection and the tank will be inspected on July twenty-sixth, which means they did it today.
Yeah, very good.
And that's about it.
Thanks, Jim. I note that Hank is always excited when Bard uses some of the water because they get quite a large bill which offsets some of the costs that are appropriated to the other users in the water industry.
Yes.
Bill, we have your intermunicipal task force report.
Well, the intermunicipal task force at weekly meetings in July continued to review proposed zoning language to regulate food trucks in the town of Red Hook and continued to discuss a proposed zoning law regarding solar energy.
Thank you, Bill.
Could we, sorry, just to pause on that permit, could we hear a little more about the solar law? Just noticing as we go through our vouchers that we've spent a bit on planner review of that. So I'm hoping we're going to get some kind of draft of that to look at soon. I'm wondering if we could get an update on what, how that's going.
Yeah, I think actually a draft might be available as soon as next week on that.
Great.
Yeah. Recommission, Harry, we've reported a little bit on the tennis court, but there are a couple of other things in their report if you wanted to highlight.
Yeah. Summer rec program is going strong. I went by there one morning and the kids were jumping and bouncing as they were, as they were showing up. The recycling system was put in place for the summer and it hasn't worked too well. And we ask, ask people not to use the recycling containers for pet waste. There is a waste can right next to the, to the recycling container, which is the right place for that to go. The tree stumps that were, from the trees we took down have been removed and leveled to the ground so they're no longer a hazard to the kids. There's a variety of general projects going on with repair work, which is kind of business as usual. John has put signs out around town for the Legion Band, Band Show, which will be August first at seven in front of the Linden Avenue School. And it's always a fun, fun event.
Okay, thank you very much, Harry. And yes, a reiteration, please use the recycling cans for recycling materials just for the folks at home for education purposes. If you're not aware, if, if the batch of recycling has some dirty materials in it, it's likely that all of the contents will be thrown away into a landfill. So we really ask that you take a moment, be careful not to co-mingle soiled products. Sarah, we have a senior services committee report for June.
Sure, so the committee met June twenty-eighth and discussed happenings at the Red Hook Community Center, which is being used for lots of different activities, not just for seniors, but there are a lot of senior activities there, including Hudson Valley Wood Carvers, which will begin meeting there, so that's exciting. And they discussed a recent Narcan training where the incidence of opioid addiction among seniors was discussed. And apparently it's one of the fastest growing groups, so they have talked about that. And I know they're on top of all the programming they can, they can do for that issue. And they'll be having more community center events for other topics as well, including the opioid issue and other kinds of like first aid, first responder kind of issues. And then they discussed the Give a Child a Summer Meal Boat Drive for this year and how they can improve the planning and advertising for it next year. And they're talking about maybe having some different drop-off locations and timing and things like that. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Yes, and if you haven't had a chance to go into the community center, I encourage you to do so. You might be surprised at just how much is available for folks of all ages there. It's quite a large facility, a lot of game rooms and support for kids of all ages, as we like to say. Teresa, do you have anything to?
No report from the highway department at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't see any other committee reports, treaty, I can open space. Perhaps we'll capture some of them for the next meeting. That's all I have on the agenda. And are there any public comments? You sure, young man, you don't want to make any public comments? Did you, did you learn something tonight?
Thank you.
Did you learn anything tonight for your report? Good, I hope we gave you enough material. Okay, thank you very much. At this time, before we close the meeting, I would like to entertain a motion to go into attorney-client. Would somebody like to make that motion? William?
I'll move it.
Thank you, Sarah.
Sarah, you traitor.
I'll, I'll second that motion. All in favor? Aye, thank you very much, thank you very much for joining us.